List, I'll need to remember Susan Reader, Jackson Bale, and that's the family of Ms. Kelly Bale. Jennifer Cook's brother, Susan Thomas, she's had knee replacement, and Tim Smith. Are there any others we need to add to our prayer request list?
I got unspoken.
Unspoken?
Unspoken.
If there's none other, we'll go to the Lord in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we've truly been blessed with a beautiful summer day with everybody coming back to school. We want to thank you for that and pray, Father, this will be a great year for everyone. Kids will be safe, everyone will be healthy. We want to pray for all those who mentioned earlier in our prayer request list, the ones that we mentioned, and the other unspoken prayers that we all have in our hearts. We just want to pray that you'll be with them and give them whatever they may need. We want to pray that, again, that you'll continue with this school, with this school system through this new school year, with our teachers, students. We always want to be prayerful for them and just pray that it, again, that it's a great year. Most of all this night, we want to thank you for your son. It's his name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, being the new year started, we'll start with some school updates. Ms. Johnson, you want to go first, Carthage Elementary?
My name is LaShay Johnson. I'm the principal of Carthage Elementary. I would like to start off by thanking you guys for all that you do. Mr. Smith, I know that y'all put lots of time and effort into this and we really do appreciate it. Carthage Elementary has worked really hard the past year. We have worked to improve our diverse culture and our students' academics, so I want to take this time to thank them. They, my faculty and staff is amazing. They have worked so hard and the teamwork is wonderful. I owe all of this that we're going to talk about to them and all the work that they put into it. We have increased our K-4 enrollment from 335 students at the end of last year to 377 students currently in K-34. We also lowered our chronically absent students from 9.9% in 1718 school year to 5.2% last year. I believe this shows the hard work that everyone has put into making all of our students and our parents feel important, safe, respected, and informed. We went through our SACS accreditation this past spring and I'm happy to say that we did get re-accredited. This was a very intense process, especially for your first year as a principal. They really dug deep into our school and gave us some wonderful comments and compliments, great feedback that we're really looking at and using. Over the summer, we've made a lot of improvements throughout our building. We completed the renovations in the last two of our last set of hallway bathrooms and they look really great. We added two new murals to the hallways, thanks to Carrie Malone. She is a wonderful artist and we really appreciate all the hard work she does. We painted hallways and we also painted the outside doors to the front of the building. They're really a nice dark black now and it makes the building look really nice. Our big kid playground has new borders and mulch around the equipment to help keep the students safe, eliminates a lot of the mud so they can go outside more. This year, we want to continue this improvement. We want to make sure that all of our students are eating breakfast now that the buses are kind of off schedule a little. Buses come in at all different times, so we started the breakfast on the go. We have a food cart that comes down to the lobby every morning about 7:45. It has pastries and muffins and cereal and things like that for the kids. And instead of going to class hungry, they can stop there, pick up a sack, get three things, use their number just like they would in the cafeteria, and they can eat it in, in class. So this has been an amazing turnout. Before we started breakfast on the go this year, our average breakfast count was around about 130 students every day. Today, we fed 241 students today. That, every day it's growing. Just to kind of put this in perspective, our lunch, our average lunch count, we feed about 300 students every day, give or take. So we're almost defeating the same amount of students we do for lunch, for breakfast. Our teachers are also continuing to improve their, their work in student achievement. We've changed some things about our schedule this year that, to help them more in ELA. We extended ELA block to 150 minutes in K-2 and 120 minutes in 34. We did that, they have now integrated science and social studies into their reading, so they're continuing that time longer. We're hoping this improves our literacy scores and improves our readings, our reading levels. Each grade level also has intervention every day. We have kids pulled every which way they go to have, we use data to decide if they need help somewhere, we help them. If they just need to be pushed harder because they need harder work, we do that. So we have that hour to individualize our instruction towards each child and they're in small groups everywhere at that, and every grade level's a different time. Teachers also have common planning every day. They work together to make sure their student work is aligned to our standards to make, you know, they share ideas and challenges they're having in their classroom. They're also making common assessments during that time. At CES, diversity has become our norm and we embrace it. We've all come from different backgrounds, we have different life experiences and different strengths, but that's what makes us great. My faculty and I model teamwork. We do this because, this is going to make me, we do this because we want the students to embrace their differences, to learn to work together as a team and to achieve success despite any of those differences. No matter your role, no matter if you're the parent, the child, the teacher, or the janitor, at CES, we're all that team that makes us great. We all want these students to grow and succeed. And we're going to. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anybody have any questions?
Yes, sir. Just two things. First of all, thank you for your leadership and obviously your compassion. That's, that's clear. And that's what we want and need, is somebody that loves our kids and loves our coworkers and that's the phrase that you're using, the picture you're painting. And I appreciate that. I'm grateful to you. I've got one question. You were giving some numbers there.
Mm-hmm.
And I know that Carthage Elementary is one of our older facilities that didn't go through a, a revamp when this was all done before. How are you managing that? How's it impacted you with those numbers? Are you, are you struggling?
No. You mean room-wise?
Right.
No, sir. No, sir. At the moment, we are not.
All right.
We still have classrooms that we can fill when we want to and, you know, I've told the teachers, if we build it, they will come. So we keep building these classrooms and we hope to fill them. But no, sir, we still have some room if we need it.
Well, well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question. The breakfast on the go program that y'all are doing, is that something that's being done countywide or is that specific to Carthage because of the buzzing issues and scheduling?
It's something that we've just started doing. It really, we just weren't seeing. We've tried, last year we had tried incentives like having, well, if you come in breakfast all week, we'll draw your name, you get a prize, you know, try different things to get kids to come in because breakfast is free. And so we want them to eat, or at least take it and have it for a snack later. And so we've just tried different things and this was something that our new lunch manager said, hey, look, you want to try this? Like, yes, let's try it. And it has, every day we've went from, you know, 40 students to now 240 students.
Well, that's really, it's really impressive and that was the reason for my question, to see the growth in the numbers. And, I mean, I think the research has proven that children who, you know, go to class with breakfast, whether it's, you know, a school-based breakfast from one that they're fed at home, do better.
Yes, I am.
You know, a hungry child is going to pay better attention there, you know, everything is going to be better for that child if they get, you know, eat, well, even for adults. Adults that eat breakfast do better.
And that's our, that's our start. You know, we got to feed them first.
So bravo to you guys for coming up with that. That's really, really a good thing.
It, it's really amazing how much they, it has grown. And it's a really cool thing. I've posted pictures on Facebook of it. It's, it's really a cool thing.
Do you deliver?
I wish. By the time I get over there, it's gone. So I'm just kind of usually looking beforehand, but...
Well, good job. I think that's great.
Thank you.
To interject a couple things there. Talking about, Scotty, what you asked about the buildings, the engineers, when they done the spec thing for the EIS grant, you structurally couldn't believe what kind of shape that our buildings were in mechanically and so on. They, if you was on the board, remember that, it was big time. They couldn't get over, and that building wasn't remodeled during the building project in 99. So you're looking at a 50-year-old building. David and I have had a plan now, we're, each year we're, we're trying to get like, how many bathrooms have we got left? One or two?
No.
Have we finished them up yet?
We finished all the hallway bathrooms.
So, so with that, everything is pretty much as upgraded as we can be, other than what we're starting on the roof now, as you see in your packets and that. So it, it is getting upgraded over a period of time and it really looks fantastic. We agree, the floors, we don't like the...
Yeah, we don't like the floors.
And she's done a really good job. She's created the environment now, you have the murals on the walls, the sayings are fantastic and they, they're, they're down-to-earth. I love that one about your wings, you don't hide. That is pretty cool. I looked at yours, they knew it. But, and then the breakfast, you know, you know how I'm about calling school offs because I thought that was a fantastic idea, just like when we went further this summer, we fed, we were feeding, I forget how many hundred lunches on the end of children. This breakfast idea, I think, will catch across the county. And a lot of kids speaking, I went over to the middle school, for example, they won't eat breakfast because they want to get out there and play basketball. So if they can reach and get something to eat, that's true. They won't, Kelly, your boys won't eat that gym full of boys playing and that's fine. But they, if you can get it so they can eat something, it's better than not having it.
And we've even, my cafeteria's now ordered Pop-Tarts single, so the kids can, they get two Pop-Tarts, but they're both individually wrapped, so they don't have to throw one away. So now they can take one, eat it in class, and stick one in their backpack for later.
I do think that's something that'll catch on.
So, yeah.
It's a great idea.
But just little things like that. Now, we're trying, we've tried different containers and things trying to help them when we think of, the paper sacks have been the best because they can kind of just grab their stuff, throw it in there and go.
And I do think things like this, reducing your numbers are starting to stimulate, are starting to grow too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we were supposed to have Carthage Elementary, but, Gordonsville Elementary, but Ms. Kelly had to take her husband to the Yelton, so we'll push that until our next meeting. And now we'll have Smith County Middle, Ms. Bale.
She's awesome. I apologize. But I want to, I'm going to say too, thank you all for all your support. You all are the best. You're always there for us and we know that. We appreciate it. Also, in the grab and go, we, I'm sure I copied everything else off of you that too. I'm painting my building like she did. I love that, those black doors on the outside where he's painting those and we're, we have the seventh, eighth grade hallway painted, thanks to Mayor Mason. He let me use some of his workers and then hired a company to come and paint. And then fall break, we're hoping to have enough funding to pay for the gym to get it painted and those vents that have dirt all over them, get them cleaned as well. And the outside door is all black and shiny. It's so pretty. So just want you to know that. And Smith County's a reward school. Our fifth grade enrollment has increased to 71. Our sixth grade remained the same at 60. Our seventh grade enrollment increased 12 to 97 and our eighth grade enrollment has gone from 72 to 104. So altogether, we have 332 at the school right now. We're a TMSAA school and we're hosting the fifth and sixth grade county tournament. The girls varsity basketball teams do a preseason game in Gatlinburg over fall break. Football homecoming and our eighth grade night are going to be the same night, September 5th, because we only have two home football games. So that's why if anyone asks you, that's why we're having two the same night. And eighth grade night will be before the game and then homecoming will be during the game. And we're going to have the field full of candidates. The more, the more we get to show off our kids any way we can, the better we like it. We offer a lot of sports, but this year we're adding a lot to our plate because we still have students that don't have that niche yet, they feel a part of a, a part of something. So we've added a Lego team and these are on behalf of volunteers. These aren't paid positions, they're volunteers that are doing it that will be board-approved and get the criminal check and the drug screening. But we now are going to have a Lego team, a dance team who will be performing at our first basketball home game, have a tennis team, bowling, and golf. And all of these are with volunteer coaches. We are looking for someone who would be well-versed in like a pilot or someone who knows how to fly, things like that, because we want to have an aviation program, well, through drones. We would buy drones and the students would work on aviation classes that the curriculum is provided free by the state of Tennessee. And we also would like to have a robotics program and, and we'd like to have a competitive academic team. So we're still looking for leaders for those things. And we also have a community service program called FCA Salt and Light Team. And they look for needs in the community and we go like we, like we want to work on wheelchair ramps. We want to rake leaves for elderly who can't rake leaves. The kids need to get out. They're, they don't obsess so much about themselves and worry about themselves when they're doing things for others. We're trying to get them to be more empathetic for, with other, for other people. Our fall formal, if it doesn't affect anybody else's night, October the 5th, we don't want to hit anything else going on in Smith County, so I threw it out there just to see. October the 5th, we're going to have our annual fall formal. We have health and wellness every Friday. We call it just what it is because we want the kids to be more conscious of their health and wellness and what really that means. Every Friday for 45 minutes, every adult in the building has a group of 17 or fewer students that they, they either get out and they play outside. We have been allowed to use Crump Paris, the tennis courts. We have kickball, softball, soccer. And at the school, we have ultimate frisbee and volleyball. We have dodgeball inside. And if the students feel that they are unable physically to do those things, we still have board games, cooking, sewing, things like that, just things for, something that they can do for lifelong wellness, instead of just thinking they have to game all the time and they get bored. Fall and spring talent shows, we have one every fall and every spring and the kids beg for more. We have a school-wide spelling bee every fall and spring. Eye Ready, we really push Eye Ready at our level because the middle school's job is to really get the, the students ready, both physically and mentally, for high schools. And Eye Ready is a wonderful ACT prep because the format of the test is so similar to the ACT and for their age, they can do the Eye Readys. It's a, it's a quicker get-in-and-get-out practice for the ACT. They like that. And it, we have a great system here in Smith County to, as administrators of the program, to see how the students progress. We have almost every student in the building, as of right now, they have finished the diagnostics for their Eye Ready. And what that means is, shows us exactly where the student is on a nationally normed test. And it goes all the way down to first grade level if need be. We don't have many there, but what we're saying is, it's one, they have to start somewhere. So they start where the students' needs are. And it's a really good program and we really push incentives on that too. We, we want to teach our students that the harder you work, that life is happier when we work hard. I mean, we're told that we're supposed to work till we sweat and we're trying to teach them, you're supposed to work and, and get tired. And they love it because they also know they're going to get good things when they work hard. We, you have to schedule a trip like a year in advance to go to the Nissan plant. So our first incentive trip, if they complete so many Eye Readys in a four-week period, they'll go to the Nissan plant for a tour. And they're excited about that. We also landscaped the building and I tell you, a big old thank you to Mason Greer and Tucker Smith. They were out here in those hot days, I was afraid somebody would come by and report us because it was so hot. They were out there digging bushes and moving mulch and Mr. Smith and his wife Leslie and Cannon dug all 73 holes. That was everything because I could have never dug that many holes. And the kids have just totally loved it because we want school to be more of a home away from home and it should look that way. And it looks really good and that's thanks to them because it could have been...
But let's give credit, I got conned in. You told me 12 when I started. For the record, let's get this right.
Yeah, it ended up being 73.
12 turned into 75.
Yeah. But, oh, it's just so pretty. And we give Wings High, our pride awards every Monday morning. We have a family meeting every Monday morning where we have special announcements, way-to-go birthdays. We had a special speaker this week that we're really going to push the McDonald House fundraisers any way we can, mainly through Coke tabs. But it, it's, it's a time that we get together as a family. We say the pledge, we do our moment of solace. But also, every teacher in the building gives a certificate to a student that they have caught representing our pride, which they're doing a random act of kindness. And we, we like to, like I said, again, show off the students every which way we can. We have a great Facebook page that gets a lot of activity. Our parents really pick up on it and that's where all of our announcements may have to go through. It's called Smith Middle. And the, our, our parents are so supportive and get on there and we, we try to save as many trees as we can by not putting notes in their book bags, but go to Smith Middle. Also, every student in the building is required to do a speech in, in every class, once in the spring and once in the fall. They have to do a speech or they have to perform a demonstration. And it's just another way that we're trying to get them ready for the next level at the high school and post-secondary.
Thank you, Ms. Bale.
Thank you all.
Any questions, comments?
What was, what was your attendance numbers for last year? You said you had 332 this year. Are you up or down?
It was 319 last year.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. We will now move on to our consent items. Do we have a motion on our consent items?
So moved.
Shoulders, do we have a second?
I want to pull D for the sake of discussion.
Okay. So approved consent items?
A, B, C, and E.
Can we do that now or is he needing to purchase? Wait a second, can he go ahead and check?
What, I didn't hear what you said.
He wants to pull D.
I'll pull D for the sake of discussion.
So we can go ahead and, Mr. Shoulders?
Do I need to modify my motion?
Just modify.
I'll modify my motion that we do A, B, C, and E. And pull D.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Lewis? Well, we've got, I guess we'll go ahead and vote. Okay, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
The only reason I wanted to pull D was if you looked at your board, and I might have read this along, this is our E app that the app is sent for out for information. We've had this, I believe, for three years, two or three years.
Three.
I just want to make sure that we ought to do the two- or three-year agreement to this instead of the one-year so you can save actually money on this. And I think, you know, it's sitting here both ways. One year was 10, five, two or three years more was 9,000 or so a year.
Yes, nine for two.
I just wanted to make sure to kind of understand, I think we ought to go at least the two- or three-year route instead of the one-year route when we get more bankroll.
I think Gina put that in there to, so that you guys saw both options. That's what we were going to recommend. I was blown away. Let me, how many, how many texts do you think were sent to Smith County last year? Some of y'all that I've told don't answer it. Take a guess.
I don't know, I'd say thousands.
Four million on this, on this app. So it's, I was blown away. It was a, it's, I was like you.
That's crazy.
Yeah, over four million. So we're, we are using it. It's pretty cool.
It's awesome. I use it all the time.
Yeah, it's, it's fantastic.
Yeah, as a parent, it's great, but...
I was, I was a little concerned about whether or not, and they gave me that number and I said, yeah, we need to, yeah, we're doing that. It's being used.
And that's the only thing I wanted to bring up. Maybe we ought to make sure we go two or three years, give it more less money.
We wouldn't get into trouble on this, would we now, or is, I mean, something changing?
I didn't have any research.
Something changing or...
It's a renewal you've already had.
If, for Shoulders, it was a, a special service, we couldn't even find anybody else that provided it too, could I ask the same question?
The only concern that I would have with going with a three-year contract, which I agree we need to go with the cheaper rate, is because communication and technology changes and I would presume that, that, that they were going to change with, you know, with the time. But, I mean, do we get updates to that as that, like if they update it, do they...
Mr. Towns did the, uh, call. If we go with the three years, do we get the updated technology changes with them?
I would think so. What we've been using has been the free version. Of course, there's still some free, but the reversion, what they use, people in the classes, the number of classes. But yeah, it's actually a capability to call a lot more.
Than what we've had before? Okay.
Yeah, we had the, I said, we took it and we've used the free version for three years.
Right.
And then they cut us off.
Well, I knew that there was a whole lot of pushback, not just from, I mean, across the country related to the fee because this was a service...
I think this, once we pay for it, actually talks to our EIS, our student information system, so all students will be uploaded into this app.
Oh, that's great. So it won't be having to add people and...
Right.
That's great.
I'll make a motion to approve consent item D to do a two- or three-year contract.
Okay. We have a motion?
Second.
Ms. Moore, Mr. Manning has a motion. Ms. Moore, a second?
What is this motion? I didn't hear it. I'm sorry.
Uh, to do a, at least a two-year to three-year contract. Don't do the one-year. It'll save you some money.
Saves $3,000 over three years?
The two- or three-years, we decided, y'all. And don't do one-year.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, this involves money. We'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. All right. Next, we have our superintendent actions. As always, hopefully everybody had a chance to look at those. Now we'll move to new business. Got quite a few policies. We'll try to get through these quick. Just a second. New business aid, policy amendment 2.403, surplus property sales. This is a second final reading. We have a motion on new business aid.
So moved.
Caleb, we have a second?
Seconds.
Mr. Shoulders, any discussion? If not, we'll vote all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. New business B. This is a new policy 2.601, fundraising activities in policy amendment 5.605, staff gifts and solicitations. This is also a second final reading. We have a motion on new business B.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Taylor, any discussion?
Yes.
Mike?
I have a question. Section in the proposed policy, two pages over, it talks about lotteries. It says, "No fundraising activity shall be conducted which distributes prizes, or prizes, to make awards to winners from among purchasers of chances by means of tickets through a random selection." If you're having a raffle, to raffle off a raffle or something, does this fall into this category?
It does.
And I do know some of our boosters and stuff do do that. Now, does that make that illegal now?
That may be illegal, makes it against your policy.
Yes, it's a policy.
But a 501(c)(3) can have one a year.
So you can do one a year of a raffle?
Only if they're five oh one, C three.
You can go through like the, and get registered and all that, but it's a big deal.
You have to register it.
Is any of our clubs registered with that?
We talked about that, or you want me to mail?
She's gonna get, well, let's have a sequence. Can she legally?
Well, we can wait.
Okay, she's gonna get into part of that in a minute on fundraising.
Well, I do know some of this goes on.
Yes.
Now.
What's the example you're talking about, Tommy? I don't understand what you're talking about.
It's like if you're selling a ticket for a.
Like chances.
Like if I sell you a ticket for a basketball or a preseason ticket, that's really illegal if you're doing anything for chance. It's like the churches do, the schools do do it. We're not supposed to do it, and we're pretty refrained from doing it, I guess. But there's probably some booster clubs, which we're gonna get into that in a minute. We're trying to get everything registered and do it the right way over time. It just takes a long time, but it's never been done.
There's no reason this has to be done tonight, correct? Could we table this the next mi-?
Yeah, but is that not state? I think that's state law.
State law.
You wanna wait toward the end and vote on this one?
Yeah, can we take it? We can take it out of order.
Yeah, why don't we just make it to the end?
Yeah, just, let me rescind my motion. Let's talk about this.
Rescind your second. We'll move this until after we have our discussion. We'll move this to the end.
Which one, B?
B. All right. Let's move on to new business C. This is policy amendment three point two oh two, Mercy Preparedness Plan. This is the second final reading for this policy. We have a motion on new business C.
Somebody?
Mr. Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lewis, any discussion?
I was reading, it says we've got to have it done within the first full day, first thirty days of the school year. It's gotta be in a written form. So what, we're just passing out, how you do that, Director?
They're documenting, turning it into me monthly. We got them in a notebook in there.
But is it turned, are the students getting a written form or is it just here at the county central office?
Well, they've got a form, and they fill out and turn it into me. And we keep them in a file. We got, so we have to meet all this in case we get pulled, get audited. So we, they're turning on, if they're monthly reports. And their document, like, they have a fire drill at Gorman Elementary at eight thirteen this date. And then Union Heights might have had it this date. As long as they, they're not uniform the same day.
Yeah.
But they have to meet these, and then we check on their check sheets.
Is that, are you actually doing, the principals, I know, are you actually doing a fire alarm bail? Is that the notification now at the schools? Because everybody, when I was in school, we had those little glasses, Tommy, and everybody was, sometimes. But are y'all ringing a loud bail? And that's why everybody knows, they just run. They know how to get out and run. Or orderly, orderly. Put it that way, all right.
I think the change in the policy, though, is just simply requiring AEDs at all schools and not just.
And within the plan.
Right.
The plan, yeah.
And what's that?
The policy just.
The policy change that's specific to this has to do with AED devices. The law has changed from requiring it just at high schools to all schools.
And that's the. And we've got them in our schools already.
We already have them. And we've updated them, and we're ahead of the.
Yeah, I got you.
But I just want to make sure that everybody understood that the change, that's what the change is.
Okay.
If there's no more discussion, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. New Business D. It's policy amendment four point six oh five, graduation requirements. It's also a second final reading. We have a motion on new business D.
So moved.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Taylor, any discussion? Not, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New Business E. This is policy amendment four point seven oh oh, testing programs. This is also a second final reading. We have a motion on new business E.
So moved.
Shoulders, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Moore, any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. New Business F. This is policy amendment six point two oh oh, attendance. This is also a second final reading. We have a motion on new business F.
Somebody?
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Shoulders, any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New Business G. It's policy amendment six point three oh eight, bus safety and conduct. This is a second final reading. We have a motion on new business G.
So moved.
Mr. Lewis, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Taylor, any discussion? If not, we'll vote.
Hold on just a second, I have a question. I know in prior situations, when parents view school bus films and things like that, that it has to be redacted for faces and things of other students so that they're not, you know. Does that still, does this require that or no?
That relieves that.
That relieves that.
And I've sat through a couple different seminars, and I don't agree, but I don't.
We talked about that last.
There was no law that allowed it.
Right.
Required the action, but I think this we're protecting.
But it's supposed to be, if I understand right, it's pretty targeted. You need to be looking at, I don't know how you'd keep that, me from doing that. But it says in there, I'm really supposed to be focused on what's going on with my child and.
And not everybody.
Not worrying about, well, you didn't do it any year, but I don't know how you can curb that either.
Yeah.
Diane.
The newer HD, we can block out everybody, we can block out the students. I haven't mastered it yet. The older tapes, when we first went to the REI, I can't block them out. So I don't know how we're gonna get around that. But the newer HD ones with the digital, we can block out literally everybody on the bus.
In the past, there was a lot of the issue, because it was very expensive to have it done. And so if you came in and said, I need to see it, and I can't afford it, that's where the problem came in. But I didn't realize there was any, that's pretty awesome, we can do that. That took care of the problem.
I haven't, as I said, I haven't had Diane master it. But we have four buses that will not have that technology. Eventually, we'll get.
Any more discussion? If not, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New Business H. This is the revision required by TCA Cleanup Bill, policy five point two oh oh, five point two oh one, and five point three oh five. This is also the second final reading. We have a motion on new business H. Ms. Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Shoulders, any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll go on to new business I. If I can get to it. This is policy amendments one point one oh one, role of the Board of Education, one point one oh two one, boardmanship code of conduct, and one point two oh two, duties of board members. This is the first of two readings. We have a motion on new business I.
So moved.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lewis, any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. New Business J. This is approval of school fees at Carthage Elementary, Forks River, Gordonville High School, and Smith County High School. We have a motion on new business J.
So moved.
Mr. Lewis, we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Taylor, any discussion? If not, this involves money, so we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes.
Just for a point of clarification for anybody who's interested, that, those fees are still subject to being waived, right? Under the waiver.
I don't know, I've seen her thinking it, it'll waive it. I don't know a child that's ever been denied.
Right.
You'll notice some of this piece at high school level is extracurricular.
Right.
So it's not got anything to do with the actual education process, but yes.
I just want to point out there's a waiver out there for, you know, the kids that can't afford it, so.
Good. Glad you brought that up.
We'll move on, new business K. This is physical year twenty, general purpose budget amendment. We have a motion on new business K.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Taylor, any discussion? If not, this is also involving money. We'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New Business L, and this is where we're gonna get in. That's what, we're going to table this one, but.
Let me say this while she's walking up here. We are really, and it's hard, because you don't imagine, you know, the old saying, bunch of kids say, well, they're not doing it. It don't matter what, we're really trying to get a hundred percent legal. And what I mean by that is, to do that, you gotta get your booster clubs registered, and it is a big deal, okay? And so our goal is to get there, and it takes a long time to get there. And so I'm gonna talk about it so that you understand where she's going with it. We're not trying to be hard to get along with and all that. We're just trying to, with all the technology and things today, and you hear of people being in situations they don't need to be in. If we can eliminate that, it will help ever, not only you guys being in a lawsuit, but our Board of Education, the whole committee on it.
So what I, what I needed to know from you guys, I'm trying to bring the school support organizations up to board policy minimum standards. And our board policy is two point four zero four, if you would like to reference it sometime. I didn't put one in your packet. But it says that any group or organization that sells or fundraises in the name of their school has to have a written cooperative agreement with the board. So I think there's a sample in your packet of what a written cooperative agreement looks like. And I've got that up and online. I've met with most of the school support organizations at Smith County High School, and reached out to the other schools, what we're trying to get started. They have to send me a list of things for me to check off that they've done. And you've got a sample of part of what, who was it we had? Smith County High School Soccer Booster Club has sent to me, and it's not everything. They're in the process of getting things to me. So do you want me to send every single item that they're checking off the list to you to get approved? Or do you want me to make the checklist and check off they've done this that we're asking, and then bring the name of that organization to you? Do you want to see all of the information? So I've asked them by January first to try to become, get everything in, and either become school board approved or not. We're gonna have it on the website. The school board policy says on our website, we will have school board approved organizations. So either they do it or they don't, they're approved or they're not. And then Mr. Smith has the right to do as he chooses with the ones, you know. He's supposed to approve every fundraiser going on in the county, whether it's through the school or with a school support organization. So, and again, we're just trying, you know. The thing I like about it, that if you will look at the school support agreement with me, is there a page, Gina, that the agreement's on? Are they numbered or?
It's after new business L. And then they're just in the order that you.
So at the top, it says school support organization agreement. What is it? And it says eight, five, nineteen is the date between Smith County. But look at the standards, the beginning of it. And I actually went to Knox County Schools, and they've been doing it for years, and then used some of their work. But it says first, the school support organization will abide by all state of Tennessee and school district policies and procedures regarding school support organizations. So there is a hope how we can ensure what you were talking about earlier. And then number two, it will hold harmless the district, the director of schools, and any other agents of the school district, thus the board, from any actions that could, you know, be performed by the school support organization. So we really need to go through this process. It's school board policy, and that's all that I'm trying to activate, is to get it going. But what I need to know from you, and if there's anything in the school board agreement, you know, that you would like to change, so please review it. It is not state mandated. I, you know, I went, I got everything on the checklist in it, and just went to another school and used what they had used for years and made it work for us. So if there's something you see.
So this, does this bring in transparency to the money that's been raised in these organizations?
At the end of every year, they will have to give me, or Mr. Smith, a statement of revenue and expenditures, which doesn't list every single item, but it shows what revenue they brought in, how much money they've spent, and generally what they've spent it for. It may went for uniforms, or it may, you know, trips. It won't say Walmart or necessarily individual checks, but it will give me an idea. Because right now, we don't know.
Didn't we get, didn't we get dinged a little bit by the comptroller, an outside source that? Didn't we get a little bit, somebody that was outside that did her, looked at her books? Scotty, I remember you, I mean, you, we, you discussed it in one of our meetings, that, said what this was about, that we didn't have maybe some funds in one or the others that wasn't. What is it, Tommy?
Ms. Beckman.
Ms. Beckman, when she did her audit.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I think what you're talking, no, I think what you're talking about, Marty, had to do with independent controls for money.
This, yeah, that's.
Okay, this ain't, this ain't the same thing then?
This, and it also keeps, if we get it registered right, it would keep, you know, people, and Smith County are good people. So if you do it, and if you say, hey, I'm in the name of Smith County Schools, I'll set a jar in here, they're gonna put money. Well, we don't have any control of that. But if we make an attempt to get everything registered, it would leave us a liability if you chose to do that, and it wasn't sanctioned, then it would relieve us.
Is that what you're saying? Is that what the point is then?
If somebody does something stupid.
And like you said, transparency too, of what's going on, you know what I mean? We're not trying to take control. We're trying to do so we can protect each other, and we're supposed to be doing it.
It's for protection to people that's handling the money.
Yes, well, yeah.
So if there's, you know, an allegation brought up, they can say, here's my paperwork, here's everything to show that I'm not done whatever is being alleged.
Well, you know, and as a business owner, sometimes it's really difficult. I get solicitations all the time from, you know, in my office, and I don't know.
What's real.
What's real. You know, and I've had issues where, you know, they've called and said, well, I'm so-and-so from, I've actually had one from Wilson Central High School, and Travis Mayfield asked me to call, and blah, blah, blah. And, well, you know, I know Travis Mayfield, and I know if Travis Mayfield needed something, he'd call me. And so, you know, but a lot of times that, that kind of stuff happens. But also, I'm more likely to donate as a business owner if, you know, the child and parent is coming in a uniform or some, you know, solicitation that I can verify.
And hopes will eventually be on our school website.
But I think it, I think it would be helpful to people who are giving, because they know that it is.
She can actually look at it, but she said it'd be posted, so hey, that is real.
And that is real, yeah.
Let me say.
And I'm sure Mr. Shoulders and probably Mr. Caleb, I mean, we're all, you know, business owners, so we, we all probably get those same solicitations.
Yeah.
So this means that all our booster clubs, whether quarterback clubs, band clubs, reading clubs, and PTO, all of them's gotta go through this register.
Or they have two choices. They can run their money through the school system and let the goalkeeper and the principal be responsible and handle the money. Or if they choose to have their own checking account, their own finances, then they need to, this agreement needs to be filed with the Board of Ed.
Just like me, if I was in that room at the school.
Yeah, well, we have some that have chosen that, and some not.
For lobbying, and for, for leaving a liability too.
Well, so many scams out there now. I mean, so many scams out there. In fact, what, two weeks ago in the paper, there was a gentleman come through here a few years ago, selling, doing something scamming, selling, doing something scamming, which I know it wasn't for the schools, but come through here, and there are just so many of those scammers.
I got tucks on him.
Oh, you did, you got?
He was selling jackets.
Oh, he was one of the few.
And let me say, I'm no expert whatsoever here. This is a work in progress. I'm learning every single day. I was hired to work for the budget, and then this sort of got laid on my lap, and I've done the best I could. So we're trying to get it up to par.
First of all, thank you for sheltering all this. It's been, clearly, that's a massive undertaking. But getting back to just your initial question, to get us in line with board policy, you were kind of presenting two choices.
Two choices. Do you want me to send every bit of the checklist they're sending to me through the board packet?
Well, my thing would be, you know, let's do it the most, I mean, I appreciate you doing it, but let's do it the most fluid way. I don't see any more reason for it to get more complicated.
And then if you have more questions about any organization, I can provide more information if you have a packet, great. So, and then I need to know also if you want anything added to this agreement, maybe by the next school board meeting, because, you know, we haven't approved anybody yet, so it's still a work in progress. So if there's anything on there, if you want to add, know what was, a lottery's or things. But it does say we'll follow.
Under our proposed policy we're gonna vote on, it's no lotteries.
Yeah, and see, it says they will follow, when they sign this agreement, it says they'll follow all of our policies, and, you know, state and local policies.
That's a state, but the chance-by-chance lottery, right?
The footnote to the lottery sites, Tennessee Attorney General opinion, and that is, maybe this one, or anybody else's. There is no particular statute that absolutely prohibits it, but they have interpreted that lotteries would amount to gambling in that Attorney General. That's effectively what you're stating, and that is what the TSBAs recommended that you adopt.
And at any time, when we see something like this ourselves, we just pick a phone call, him say, okay, what about this? And that's where it stops.
But there are, and to tag on to what Mr. Winkler said, of that being the Attorney General opinion out there, there's also, you have the ability to go in and get those things approved so that they can be done.
You can register them, but it's like, I think, we checked on it back when we done what we did.
Right.
And I believe it was like 20%. You have to give them like a, I call it a ransom if they'd approved it, if you give them 20% of the money. I mean, it was okay if you paid them, and that's kind of, it wasn't, it was like a year. I think it was like a year.
It's a long process, yeah.
If you was gonna do it next year, you had to wait a year to 18 months to get the answer, and it was approximately 20% at that time, if I remember correctly.
So if you're asked, we have three or four, five OC3s, they still have to do the agreement, even if they're five oh, what, five oh, I just lost my train of thought. What did I call it?
Thirty six.
They still have to do the agreement, because that's what I've been asked. But we're already approved by the IRS, and I'm like, according to board policy, everybody has to do the agreement. Any questions? Because I got my answer, so. And if you need anything changed on that, let me know. We're still working in progress. So by January 1st, hope to have them all done.
It's like 16.
Approximately 16, and some of those may choose to run the money through the school. But when I count them, I've got about 16 entries. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Move on to New Business N. It's permission to purchase minivan for transportation for the Tennessee school for the blind. Do we have a motion to approve New Business N? Mr. Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. McCalee, any discussion?
This is coming off the state bids.
Hey, it's surplus, and the state surplus, the national. Wait, shaking her head.
David, I've been looking for almost a year, and where they do those bid online, everything that's been there of the same thing has been junked. So Mr. Tracy Carpenter and me have put money together to go off my unused one, which is two or three years old with limited mileage, but will last a while. School, high school will also use it, so they have to take a bus and a driver to go to the rehabilitation center in Smyrna. They can use the van to take students back and forth to that when they need to. So that's kind of the option. So we're looking at something in, we've got $20,000 between us. I'm not gonna spend all that. I'm gonna get the best money I can, but we're gonna try to build us something and not somebody's stuff. I mean, I've not been able to find anything now that we've looked for a year and a half. So we have to go out into normal, talk to us about what we have to do in the crisis.
Any other discussion?
Does it have to be a minivan?
No, but we've got two, two very tall kids that we've had for several years, so we're looking for some room, for some life room, whether in there for two hours or in the morning and afternoon. And so that if the school does use it for transporting smaller groups of people, two and fours from Smyrna, they have room. So that's why we, and with the minivan, we can avoid the bigger bus, but we can't do the 15 passengers, so we can run the seven-passenger minivan legally. So that's why we're loving that.
Any other discussion?
We're about buying a little bigger van, not a minivan, but something just.
Once you go over seven, they're really iffy because of the top over, and the 15 passengers are illegal to transport students in. There's not a whole lot in between, so we're going with that seven-passenger.
Do you feel like you have adequate funds to purchase what you need?
Yes. We put it in our budget last year and said, the Spade Department and my department is matching funds, since we'll kind of both be using it. Terry's car is fixing to roll over 300,000 miles. I mean, we put it to it, we're putting over 250 miles a day each way, car, so.
I just remembered from, I guess probably when the Impala was purchased, which has been a number of years ago, I think you'd made a request for something like 3,000 or 4,000, and then the board actually gave you more money because we didn't want you out transporting these kids in, you know, something that we didn't feel like to say.
Blind students stranded on the interstate.
Right, exactly, yeah.
So we don't, and that's the thing with everything coming out of the surplus thing. I wouldn't put my grandkids in and we go, so I'm not gonna put students in.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you felt like you had adequate money, you had what you need to purchase.
We've been talking for about a year, so Eric's kind of set aside money, and I put it in. By now, it's just normal, both were approved with our amounts, so we should be good.
Okay.
Any other discussion? If not, this involves money, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New Business N, bid approval for the roof repair at Carriage Elementary School. Do we have a motion on New Business N?
Don't move.
Second.
I don't know that it, yeah. Probably need to open it for sake of discussion, because I don't believe that there was ever.
Yeah, I want a little fire going on this, David. If we're going with the low bids, and what was the new sheet that you sent out?
David explained it. Also, you have that graphic where it shows the thermographic of the water. I thought that was pretty neat for the board to see there.
He's already explained it to me.
The huge engineering company that put together a spec, kind of did all this, thought us through this, they made an adding mistake. So they come back and redo the, that's redo the segment, they made a mistake. Let me, I know this is kind of hard to read, but if you'll just take, I kind of just wrote this out. If you'll take one, and then I can get it. And this will help you, I'm just transferring it on to just me writing it, letters probably don't fix paper. So it's easier to say that way, I can help you to understand what this sheet Warren and Associates put out. We had, the first three beds that you see there are part of the PPO roof. That is what I call the white roofs that you see. We have three beds on that. Baker Roofing is two, it says 265,000. Now, that's a little misleading, because if you look on the bottom of this, of your sheet for Warren, you'll see another amount there for 25,100. You see Professional Roofing had one for 15,500, Radcliffe's 61,000. When they get into this, and what they do, they allow this, if, when they tear that roof off, and they got to do a lot of replacing the wood decking or the concrete decking, this is the added cost to that. Okay, so I can pretty well assure you that they're gonna be using that money. So this bed of 208,000 will actually be 223,400, Professional's Radcliffe is 285,261. The other one I got over here, Radcliffe, they're the only company that bid with the rubber membrane roof on it. That's sort of what we have now, is rubber membrane. And that is, if you choose to go with that one, you're looking at 294,000. It's the only bed we had on that. And they're looking at, so it's up to y'all, whichever roof you want, whatever company you want.
When's the target date for this?
Well, as soon as we get this, we're gonna, they've got, I think, 120 days or how many days to complete it, so.
And David, this is what, when you figured, about 18, 20% of the entire, this is only about 18 or 20% of the entire roof?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I assume we're trying to do it like on a five-year plan?
Yeah, this is, let me kind of give you an idea of this bed in, kind of show you what.
Also, where he thinks it's very gonna be damaged, since they've done a thermal.
Yeah, we did a thermal.
And it'll show you about the whole roof's underwater, so I assume we think the deck will probably be replaced.
To show you around. Here's a certain part, I'm just gonna hold it up like this for now. That little part of the roof that you see here, this is thermal on it, white being completely saturated with water under it, red, and then all the way down to blue, is you can see how much water is under that roof just right there. And this is just, and you see every section of roof that they did, you can see how much red and white there is on it. They said about 80% of that roof had water under it, of that part of that roof. So that's the reason, what this number here, I figure they're gonna be using that 15, I think there's gonna be some damage.
That's not doing the whole roof?
No, we're doing.
So only about 15, 20%.
We are doing, no, this is, if you look at Carriage Elementary here, this is the front of the school here. We're doing this section here, that's the gym right here, plus the cafeteria, kitchen, cafeteria, library, the joining hallways, and a couple of classrooms, that middle section here.
What about the rest of the roof?
The rest of the roof, we're not having much trouble with. This started because we were just having tremendous amount of leaks in here.
That cafeteria's giving them fit.
Yeah, it was just getting, it just wasn't cost-effective to keep fixing this roof. And actually, the roofing company said, you're gonna put new roof on it. We're doing, we're just doing all the same.
Is the rest of it rubber membrane or what?
Some of, yeah, some of it's rubber membrane, some of it's that asphalt. That's what I, it's like a sheen of rolled-out soup, and that other is that ballast-type roof with the rocks on.
What's giving us that circle?
That's what I was just saying.
Well, we've got two white roofs in the county. We've got one on Forks Rivers Gym, we've got one on Play Room, out of the gym at Gorns.
That'll be.
Never had any problem with it. And the one at Gorns was maybe been on five or six years. The one at Forks River's been on longer than I've been at this, 14 years. It's been on longer than that, never had a problem with it. All the rest of our roofs in the county are the black rubber membrane roofs.
Now, we're getting water from Forks River and the rest of our roof, I think, just because of the windows.
That's from the window, yeah, that's from those windows they said would never leak.
Also, also from the white roof to the black, maybe you can turn them both off on a day like today, and this is pretty unbelievable, tell them any degrees difference. The feedings is exactly the same engineer.
Their gym, Forks River's got a white roof on their gym, same gym, right? Give me their seats, the same gym. On a summer day like that, turn that off, come back tomorrow, the feedings roof will be 10 degrees hotter than Forks River's roof will.
It's not reflecting the heat like that.
Right, so the rubber membrane roof, it has seams, they put it out rolls, they got a seam they melt, and all that to it. The white roofs is all one piece, no seams in it, so.
So they was giving, they was giving the specs, how to be built? Each one was told that it had to be a certain?
Yes.
Was one of them a lot cheaper than the other one?
Yeah, exactly, yeah. That, this is the bid, the spec book right here.
Okay.
This, so they all, and we had more than associates, engineers, firm, I believe, to do the specs part.
Okay.
David, do you have a suggestion? I mean, you're the man that's invested every day.
I do the white roof, chief's one, what I do. You left it up to me.
That's, David and I discussed it, that's why we thought it's important to write the specs on it, for the fact that it don't matter who it is, they gotta meet that.
Yeah, they all read the specs, so. And the Baker, let's see, Baker Roofing is from Madison, Professional Roofing is from Sheverville, and of course, I know Radcliffe.
Is there warranty with these, David?
Yeah, there's usually a 15-year warranty on the rubber membranes, 20-year on the whites. This generally, now, I don't really, I've not looked at it enough to see what the warranty, I would, yeah, it'll be 15 or 20-year warranty.
Usually it's 20 years, but we just, we just finished this one up there across the, that's the other compartment, we just finished that up up there.
Yeah, and I think that's what it is.
So that's what Professional is, is the white roof?
Yeah, yeah, those first three are all white roofs.
We got a motion?
Yeah, so.
I'm not a motion, if we go with the low contract, the professional roofing contractors?
Say.
So we got, Mr. Manning with the motion to.
Still a difference in money.
Approve the low bid. And actually, I'll have to have Mr. Shelders, I think we already had a, we had a motion. You second his?
Yeah.
I guess that'd be a change in your motion a little bit.
I'll change my motion to accept the low bid.
Okay, and Mr. Shelders second?
Yeah, so will.
Any more discussion? If not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
I'm at the motion on New Business B.
New Business B, okay. We'll go back to New Business B real quick. And we have, Mr. Manning has a motion to approve New Business B. Do we have a second?
Say.
Mr. Lewis?
You have to remind me what that was, that was the.
Oh, yeah.
Activities, yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is a second and final reading.
Right, oh, I got it, yeah.
We have a motion, any more discussion? If not, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Right.
Aye, and you oppose. Motion passes. Now we will move to New Business O. This is the annual election of the board chair and vice chair for the 1920 school year. We'll start off with the board chair. Do we have any nominations for board chair?
Well, can I ask a question before you ask for nominations?
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that proper, to ask a question before you make nominations or nothing? You've been in that position for a while, and you do a remarkable job at it, but if I was wrong last year, when you took it again, you indicated that you weren't gonna move forward anymore, is that?
This will be my last year, this coming school year will be my last year on the school board.
Okay, so.
I'm not planning on running for real.
Is this a two-year deal?
No, it's just a one-year.
Okay, okay.
He's done in.
I'm done at the end, yeah, it would be August of '20. It would be.
Same time of the year.
So, I mean, maybe I need to ask it a different way.
Need to ask some more direct questions.
Probably, yeah, it sounds like. Are you not out for sitting as chairman?
I will, I will sit again if you want me to as chair, but it will be my last year. Just somebody needs to be preparing for next year, if that's what the board wants. For the 2020.
I have another question after that.
Okay.
I get the same, two questions for the same money, right?
Right, right.
Is there anybody in here that's wanting to sit on, we need to hear them some?
Well, I would if he hadn't took it, but if he was to take it, I first support him, he's gonna find a job.
Oh, yeah, I'd support it, but, I mean, I would take it if, you know, because I've done it. You have too, we both have done it several years, and I would take it, but no, you're doing an excellent job, and I'd just rather you stay. Would rather you stay.
This will be my last year, that's what I'm trying, on the board period, so that's up to y'all.
All right, that being said, then I have a motion that, I'm gonna make a motion that you serve another year as chairman.
I'll second that.
Okay, no other nomination? If there's not, I'm gonna abstain. We'll vote, I think everybody'll have to vote. Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Abstain. Okay. Vice chair for the 1920, do we have any?
Who is the vice chair this year?
Ms. Moore.
Okay.
Do we have a nomination for vice chair?
If somebody wants it, I'm in the same position that Brian's in, I'll be glad to do it again. This is my last year on the school board. I've got, my son will graduate in May, and I feel very strongly that it should, this office should be held by somebody that has a vested interest, i.e. kids in the school system. So, I mean, I'm happy to serve again if you all would like, or if somebody else wants to take that, that will not hurt my feelings either.
Let me ask a question in line with that, which I think, you know how I feel about you as well, and what you do. But with you saying that, and chairman saying this is his last 12 months, should we be considered somebody that's gonna be here a little while to roll along? You know what I mean? Because it looks like we've got some change, it's gonna take a while, maybe.
Well, the role of the vice chairman would be to step in in the event that the chairman can't be here, can't serve. So, I mean, I think it would be appropriate to have, you know, leadership that's gonna extend beyond 12 months.
With that being said, Mr. Chairman, if you allow me, I'm gonna make a motion to nominate Mr. Shelders as vice chair, since he's got a lot of experience and he's just come in here, he's gonna be here three more years. That'd give us some overlap.
Do we have a nomination for Mr. Shelders? Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Manning? Any other nominations? If not, we'll vote?
Yes.
I'm staying.
Staying?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes.
That kind of gives the other one.
Okay. So we've got that set for next, for this coming school year. We'll move on to discussion eight. This is the student enrollment numbers, August 2020. We'll move on to discussion eight. This is the student enrollment numbers, August 2019. Mr. Smith, do you want to speak on that?
Uh, I feel like it's part of my job for sure to inform you, uh, of where we're at, what I think our expectations are, where we're growing. Uh, I've asked some guests to come tonight because, not that you wouldn't believe me, but I think it's always good to validate from other sources, uh, to see where we're going, what's going on. A few things I want to say, you know, we do the growth issue at Gormonville, won't be done in, I thought it was New Milton's split. Uh, it's maxed the mass of those buildings. And we said we done it with a three to five year band-aid. We're three years in. Um, we went from three kindergarten classes out there this year to five. We went from 11 kindergarten classes across the county to 15. Uh, we're exploding in the early grades. And some people will say, well, why did this start? Well, I personally, I've been doing this a while. You don't move your children unless it's an absolute must. Once they become seventh, eighth, ninth, and start involving sports and, and clubs and organizations and so on. Guys, Mid County is attractive. Where we geographically sit in a fantastic place. If you don't be that, every realtor you pick up wants to make sure they're known, they're coming, they're, they're zone for Mid County schools, which is a plus. Uh, you'll see in the newspaper this week, and we're getting ready to get some stuff out to you guys. We're very proud of our teachers. We, uh, uh, if you send, you need to pick the paper up and we can get a better detail of that put together, we'll get that to you. But we, we, we've done fantastic in scoring this year. And those are pluses for people wanting to move here. Um, uh, guys, we're, we're 170 students from when we finished the year last year. That don't sound like a lot, but you multiply that times five, where you could be at in five years, that's a, that's a mess. You're, you're one subdivision, you're one apartment complex, and having a mess. And I, and I can't stress that enough. If those of you that was on here when I first became director, uh, I had a special call meeting two weeks after to tell you this is coming. It's coming. Now, I'm telling you, at some point, and there's gotta be some planning put in, and it can't just be here. It's gotta be, uh, talked about. It's gotta be, you know, I didn't, you know, we're growing at about five or six percent, is what it looks like. And again, if, if that keeps happening, you can't catch up if you started now. And I think it's important that I let y'all know that. Uh, by my numbers, we grew in every school. I think Smicky and, and they were washes. I mean, they're fit on the day. I think you're about 10 off at, at Smicky High School and it's a middle school up and down, fit on the day. But, but other than that, you're, you're, you're growing substantially at each school. So, again, I think you need to know that. I think it's my job to tell you that. Now, with that being, Mr. Crockett, would you come up please? Mr. Jeff Crockett, I think everybody knows Jeff. I asked Jeff to come because he is, uh, he's honest. Uh, he does, he does the 911 addresses. And I think you can, Wilson County has a formula. I'm, I made a formula up last year. And I just said, surely you could figure one, one per, one child per house, okay? But Wilson County actually uses a formula, 1.5. If it's an apartment, if it's a house, that's what they base their projections on. And I asked him to give us some real numbers, not, you know, what, what are you doing at 911 addresses and where, where's it happening at? Because I, I haven't even asked you this, because I want to hear it too. I got an idea, but...
Well, is the new, the new building that I'm seeing as far as, as, as issuing the, uh, the new 911 addresses, uh, it's basically county-wise. I mean, I would, if you asked me if we divided the county north, south, east, and west, and you told me which two of those four quadrants were the, were the two, I would tell you north and south, probably, essentially, where most of it's going on. Uh, as, as Director said, he and I, uh, here a while back, and we were having a conversation one day in passing, just talking about the amount of growth and the amount of building that was going on here in the county. Uh, and he contacted me here a week or so ago, asked me, you know, would it be possible we'd get some numbers together and come here tonight and, and just to let y'all know of how much is going on. Uh, I have been your 911 director since February of 2016. That's actually, became the EMS director in December of 15, and then 911 director with that in February of 16. Uh, of course, that's worth three, I'm three, but might as well say three and a half years into that job. Uh, I went back and looked and, uh, the, the numbers as best, and they're not gonna be exact, but they're really close. I have issued somewhere around 260 new 911 addresses, uh, since I took that job in February of 2016. If you take that three and a half years and divide into that number, that's, that's an average of, I think it's right around 75 a year. And then, of course, you divide that, divide that down to 12, that's, that's six a month, basically, so over six a month, I think. Uh, you, you mentioned subdivisions, and, and I'll, I'll agree with you 100%. There's a piece of property somewhere. Uh, and, and I don't, I mean, I don't know exactly where it's at, but there is a piece of property somewhere in this county that's gonna sell them all these days. And the right person, right developer's gonna get a hold of it. And before you know it, you're gonna have 50, 75 homes in a huge subdivision here somewhere. I mean, I, I, I can see that coming fairly quickly. Uh, the two subdivisions currently that, that I have dealt with, as y'all are aware, the Phase Two become a cold subdivision in South Carthage. If I'm not mistaken, I had just 25 lots when that phase was open over there, and I think it is almost full up. I haven't been back through there in, in, in a pretty good while, just to, to look and see that at one time they were down only two or four or five vacant lots out of those. Uh, the other subdivision, of course, is the, uh, subdivision here on Gores Highway, just inside Gores City Limits Cross from Bonnet Lane. Uh, that subdivision, I believe, has 26 lots in it. And there is either, I believe it's, it's either eight or nine of those lots are either completed or, or construction is starting on those. And I do know there is a, there is actually a Phase Two to that subdivision too. I'm, I'm not, you know, real familiar with it. I do know there's a Phase Two. I'm not sure how that lays out. Probably be up on that, up on the hill, not behind somewhere. But, uh, I mean, it's just, we, we, we are growing, uh, building wise. It's, uh, I gave you an example. I just went back the last four months, uh, and the months are up and down, y'all. Y'all understand that depending on, depending on the weather and, and of course, what's going on in the building that goes on. But, uh, in the month of May this year, I issued 19 in the month of May. Uh, June was nine, July was back up to 10. And this month, as of last Friday, I've already issued 11 in the month of August. Uh, of course, now, now, keep in mind, this includes, that's, that's residences and/or businesses in the entire county and the three municipalities, Goresville, South Carthage, Antcarriage, that, that's everything. Those are not these numbers I'm giving you. Uh, however, a small number of, of those residential numbers are rebuilds or replacements, as I call them. But, you know, and that's a very small number. And then, of course, on the, the side of the new businesses, that's a very small part of that, of that number too. And when I say rebuild or replace, what happens is if, uh, somebody's living in an old, uh, the, the old farmhouse on the place and, uh, its address that so-and-so right now, well, they decide that they're going to, uh, tear down the old home place and build a new house somewhere close to it, but the new, the new, uh, building side has moved enough that I, I really need to go and issue a new 911 address. But like I said, that's a very, very small force, force of numbers too. But there is a, uh, there is a lot, a lot of building, a lot of building going on. So it has been since day one when I took this job.
Well, and if that's the case, the numbers you gave there, that would be pretty consistent to the Wilson County formula, what we're seeing the growth projections and the numbers here, 170 roughly. And, and by the way, Mr. Lewis, we were trying to, I want to make sure, give sure an ideal to have him to come. And I think that's an excellent ideal, because I think it, uh, I think it validates what I've seen. I wanted it to come from somebody else, so.
Well, and, uh, you know, and thank you, Jeff, for coming. I mean, we all, you know, you're reading here and you're reading here about population, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Of course, the, the easiest thing to do is just go straight to the source. And, you know, so thank you for your time and that. Can I ask you just, uh, if I'm following you right, uh, in the three years that you've been in that role, you're seeing it consistently rise every year?
Uh, yes, I would, I would say that.
And about, and, and nothing holds you to, but, you know, if you're seeing it consistently rise every year by, by, by parking about what percentage do you think?
Uh...
Probably seeing a 10% increase every year? Or, you don't want to make
I, I would say probably, probably 10 to 15% would be, be a safe percentage without just sitting down and putting a pencil to it and taking the year-over-year numbers, you know, get, get an accurate percentage for you. Uh, it, you know, I, I can, I can tell you that from, from the first year, which was in 2016, uh, it seemed like, you know, it was, it was just, it was moderate. And then the year since then, 17, 18, and even the first start, it, it just, it seemed like it, you know, it gets bigger and bigger. I got used to there for a while of, of doing maybe, uh, well, just about what the, what the numbers average out of four or five a month. And then I started, I started seeing that some months being four or five a week. You know, and like I said, it, it's up and down depending on the time of the year it is, what month it is, and what's going on. But, uh, just on a, on a consistent level, yes, yes, it's Smith County's role.
All right. Then, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may ask something else now, and I'm just trying to keep my train of thought going. I don't mean to interrupt anybody else have a question or something. If he's documenting that kind of increase every year, and that he's giving us, and then we sit here since I've been here, uh, and heard some schools talk about, we've gone to the halls, we've got them everywhere but treehouse, you know, trying to house them. I mean, I hate to put you on the spot, you're director of school. What, what path we need to get on?
Well, Mr. Lewis, I've expressed my concern to the educational committee and, 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 on one occasion. And I think that's the next step again, with your permission. I think I need to talk to Mayor Mason and ask the, uh, educational committee to convene and, and explain this again. I think we, they've got to understand that that's gotta be in the planning of the county.
Well, in, in the last part of this, and then I'm gonna hush anybody else talk. And if we do that, and, and let's just say, I'm gonna play devil's advocate here for me. Let's just say they're not receptive to that or something. But then we've gotta completely, I mean, he's as neutral as Switzerland standing over there, you know, can't get any more neutral than that, throwing these stands at us. I mean, can't just let these children end up in yards somewhere, you know? If, if they don't, then what's the next?
Well, I think, I think at that, at that point, that, that, that I need to contact the Commissioner of Education, uh, uh, the SWIN. I think the government, I think, uh, I think at some point you're even gonna get to the point. I think we were nearly there before, going before we did. I think if our marshal, one phone call would have probably took care of it. Uh, you know, and you don't want to do that. You want to work together. But at the same time, I really don't care as long as it's doing what's best for children. And I mean that.
I understand.
And so I think that's the next step is that, you know, guys, where the situation was, that we could, in my opinion, we'd been condemned. We would have had a choice if the right people had have came in before. Something had to happen. And I think you're gonna get there pretty soon. And I'm gonna let both principals talk a bit. If it wasn't from one class at going for high school right now, you'd already be there. You're already there now. And then I want to let Sean talk too about, he's back, so he's two teachers away from having another teacher right now. He's two students away from having another teacher. I just, I want you guys to understand the urgency and the planning and the management that's went in to be where we're at now.
Well, I mean, for my part of it, of course, I, they're here and I appreciate them being here. Uh, and I know they're gonna echo the same sentiments. I mean, I don't, for my part of it, I don't have to, to hear a repeat of the same. Uh, I mean, you know, we've heard it right here. Uh, we see it on our enrollment and, and we've heard it from you. And I do appreciate the principal's opinion and things, but I, you know, there's no use in just on and on and on. I mean, uh, let somebody make a motion or something about what we need to do. But clearly, this is what we're gonna have to address, because if we started, i- if just to say if we determined we needed to be, if we started laying the foundations for that or whatever, what would we be five day, five years down the road before we could do something?
They, they told us recently, and Brian, no more about this, your background, but they told us it'd take, if, if everybody was in agreement, it should be 26, 28 to 36 months in permits and drawings. And then you'd be two to three years in actual construction. So you're looking, if you did it now, everybody, you had the money sitting here, you're probably looking, I said, six, five early, seven on the other end. So you're looking, that's the timeframe you're looking.
And with this kind of percentage
And you're doing the numbers of what he's telling you here. That's what I'm trying to tell people. So.
We're gonna be in trouble, is what you're saying.
If it continues, we'll make
Probably more time in that, because I know with the last time that we built, it took quite some time to even get a contractor.
That's, and they, and they say they're, they say they're so booked right now and contracted behind, they can't get anybody to, and you're right. And that, that's what I'm saying. Those are, you know, perfect world. Let's hear, and you're probably looking farther than that. But we better be looking, and they better, the county needs to understand. So.
I will say that I, I just ask that we don't get to the point that we have to start putting drivers back in. That's just, that's just not
Well, it's to the, you know, in
That's just not a good thing.
Well, they go from the, they, they'd appreciate from the time you pull them in to nothing. Just like right now, we've got two, we've basically, we've ran and run bids and basically giveaway. You can't get rid of them. And then they, David, it's, we hate working on them, because you gotta use their parts unless you switch it all over and convert them. Uh, they're, they're worthless other than the fact of buying time to get through. You may, you may be at such growth though, that you may have to buy some. That's what's here to me. We may be like, we may have enough growth that we have to buy some while the building project's going on, because we've waited so long now.
It just, it just, well, that is, yes, you've got a place to house them, but that doesn't take care of feeding them. That doesn't take care of
That didn't end at gymnasium time.
All that's doing is putting a roof. That's putting a classroom in. And that doesn't cover anything else.
All that is supposed to be against for temporary.
Yeah.
In emergency situations.
It's just not, it's just not a good
I want to clarify something you just said about we waited too long. We, I know you mean the county. I don't, you don't mean this
Yes, it's not the board. The board's been retroactive in this.
Yeah. Well, I'm, right, right. I agree. And so I just wanted to reiterate that when you say we waited too long, you're not referring to this
No, I'm not at all. I just, I, I say we in family at the beginning.
Well, because it's all, it's a problem that's all, yeah, it's a problem that we all have to, to address. But it's an issue, like you said, that you've been, that you pointed out from the beginning. But, uh, Jeff, a question for you that I have. The growth that you have seen specifically in the last four to five months, is that still split north and south? Or it is, okay. So it's not really?
Well, north and, I would say north and south and southeast county.
Okay.
There's just, there's, there's some things, some things going on west and some things going on, you know, direct east. But it seems to be more to the north and south and then, like I said, the southeast a little bit.
Okay.
How much percent, how much capacity is the middle school over here, the Carthage middle
It's probably got about, uh, about 10 rooms. It's got room to grow. You could grow, and that's, you know, we've said at every school.
So what's the capacity of students in the whole though, being, from being full right now, the middle school? Because this was brought up like, remember when we had somebody and we was talking about it? And they said, well, we got classrooms sitting in the middle school. It's an unpopular thing to think about bringing students from one school to another, but...
Well, you, I don't think you, I mean, I don't even
Just talking about you.
You'd have to
That don't fix the problem.
It won't fix the problem, because everything's grown if you look at your numbers. But there's one thing we can do, and we've been diligent enough not to pull this card. We have an ace up our sleeve. The state of Tennessee gives us school boards the right to vote to build schools. If we voted right here tonight to build a school or schools, the county commissioners has to fund it. They can't say, you can't build schools. They have to come up a way to fund it. And we don't want to do that. Am I not right, Mr.?
I'd have to look for sure.
But look, make sure, because that's the way the law was years ago. It hadn't changed. But you don't want to do that with the situation the county's in, you know?
No, it wouldn't be possible.
So we need to go back and try to work with the county commissioners and let them put this on their planning, because this is gonna, what we did a few years ago, you know, we're on the south side of county, was just a band-aid. And it was mentioned to be a band-aid that night. And now the band-aid is seeping a little bit. And it's the
Well, it's, that's why
And next year, it's gonna be seeping quite a bit more in another school.
Didn't you run with
Then you run with another issue of land, which, you know, the pre, this, so many people on this board and the previous ones had to foresight to buy this property and going for it, which, that would eliminate a land issue for that area. But now, when you come over here and start looking, that gets into a bad situation, and eminent domain, I don't like it. It was done before during my time, I did not like doing that. It leaves a bad taste in everybody's mouth, but when you come to this side of the river, they, that could get you into a situation, too.
How long has it been, Director, since the Pleasant Shade School was closed? I know that, we're sitting here talking...
2004, 2005. When was it?
It's that long ago?
2004, 2005, I just...
So is that, is that property still ours then? Is it the school board's property?
No, it's the community.
Community center now.
Yeah. So the county owns it?
Pleasant Shade Community Center.
The community owns it, right?
Yeah, the community owns it.
That property was sold and given away.
It what?
Stayed over.
We did not own that property.
It was a liability.
Pleasant Shade.
Yeah.
Making it to the building, other things.
Well, the first step is, is like you said, you, we need to go before the Education Committee, just let them see this again.
Would it be possible to set up a joint meeting between the Board of Education and the Education Committee?
I think you can have the, I think you can have the Educational Committee and then have, invite the school board to be there and be there. I think, I think it'd be the same thing.
Or vice versa, I mean, I, it doesn't matter to me, but...
I think protocol, if I'd be wrong, would be for them to have it and then us to be visitors.
Well, but we might not get asked, so can we invite ourselves?
Well, I think, yeah, I think, yeah, I, I think that's, we need to be there, and I think, and I think...
They might not let us speak, though.
Well, I think, sure, I think Mayor Mason would allow you guys to speak. I, I think we can talk him and...
Who's chairman of that committee?
Well, uh...
Or do we know?
I think the one that's there retired, so I don't know, I don't, we've not had one in the last year, year and a half. Maybe two years.
Well, what's the proper motion about, I mean, I'm very much a motion...
Well, there's no motion.
I don't know if you have to, but if you give me permission, I will contact Mayor Mason and ask for them to put that board together. And I don't even know that he's actually ever appointed, because we've not had one this year. So then ask him if he's not, would he appoint that board, and, and would they meet with us?
I think it'd be an excellent idea, at least to get it out there.
Yeah, I think it'd be an excellent idea.
Start planning somewhere.
And so that's the way it needs to work, we need to sit down together and talk.
Everybody needs to work together, that's the way it needs to happen.
Well, the other thing I want to point out, too, is, is during some of the commission meetings and things that have happened, and taxes and all that, I mean, it's been discussed, we have a healthy fund balance, which, that's because of good management and because of the way we do business. But even if we took our entire fund balance, it ain't a drop in a bucket of what it would cost to build a school. So I, I don't think, but I think the public in general don't understand that. And so I just want to make that statement that we can't do this, the board can't fund a school. I mean, we can't even fund a footer for a school.
No.
So, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, that people understand that while we may have a healthy operating balance, that is nowhere near funding a school.
Well, we shouldn't take our fund balance to...
Is it wrong anyway?
Yeah, then next year, how are you gonna fund school systems?
I don't, I don't even think legally from the way I don't really attend, because anything that you can take educational money, you know, it's...
Oh, I don't, I totally agree with you, but, but the general, the general public don't understand that for the most part.
Well, it's like if you used every penny we had, we just got to talking about Carsville Elementary's time bomb.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I mean, you're looking at, uh, what, a million dollars?
Just the roof.
Did the whole, that's a million dollars.
Be a million dollars.
Well, and that's been something that we've been dealing with for how long, Dave? A long time. I mean, almost my entire tenure on the board, between that and the air conditioning system at Carsville Elementary.
Finally got a new one of those.
Yeah.
It's 90%.
But it's been over time to, to eliminate some of those expenditures in a lump sum, so I mean, we've been...
And back to a question, too, that Marty asked, about the, not, something I think that in, in the management scheme, we need to keep in mind. Now, you know, you lawyers who jump on this here say one way, but I heard from a county official, it said that he was told by the state that we would never be allowed to build on to another school in the county that didn't have existing sewer. And that makes sense, because Union Heights has sewer problems when it rains, you have an event, Old River. I, I live a week at the Old River tournament, I, I sit on fins and needles to the tournaments, till they get done, because it rains every week it happens, the bathrooms are overflowing, because, you know, only school we don't, because all that extra property is, or is, other than that, every school went, uh, New Milton, same situation.
We had it at the high school, too.
That's the reason, yeah, and it's own sewer.
Yeah.
But, but, you know, that, that's corrective, because it's sewer. But these others, I have been told now, through a high-ranked county official, that we could never build on to any schools that we got now. They wouldn't, the state would never let that happen again, and I don't doubt that with the issues we have.
Well, we've also had consultants and people in here talk about why it's not a good idea to build on to those buildings, because there's only a core attendance that those school buildings can support, because cafeteria size, gym size...
Exactly.
I mean, we've talked about bathrooms, and think, yes, you don't have the proper infrastructure in place to support them.
Just like, too, when we had such a problem, Shane, you was the principal at that time at Going for Elementary. It wasn't, you know, Tommy, I think you went in and saw the extra seating. It wasn't that we couldn't feed them because of seating, it was because of the capacity of the ovens. We couldn't get enough cooks in there to, to get them through. It's taken an extra hour and a half, because they weren't designed for that flow.
Well, I mean, they're starting lunch at like a few minutes after 10, and then serving until like 1:45.
From 10 to 1:30 at that time, is that correct?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
And you're not there now because of the situation, but we're gonna get there pretty quick.
And it'll come quicker than what you think it's coming.
And it don't seem like it, but we're three years in now, to this third year.
And slow when it starts.
Well, I believe we got a plan. We'll go try to get on with the Education Committee.
Do, do y'all, do y'all want to ask them any questions you feel comfortable before we're at? I'm good. I do want to say, on, Sean, you had 264 kids, I wish I had my, and, and you got them out in 20 minutes. I didn't get a phone call, it might have been somebody mad, but, but only 70, and this is something we can't control again, but only 70 kids out of 264 ride the bus.
Wow.
So...
That was, that was the first day we had our kindergarten, and I went in there specifically to, to camp, because I knew we were alone in the bus. Thursday, we had, we had 70 kids on the bus.
I know, I know the first day you had them all there, it took 20 minutes, that's pretty awesome to get them out. I, so it'll get better, that's pretty good.
I said you might get some phone calls, because we were backed up.
No, I didn't, I'm shocked, I didn't, yet.
There's always tomorrow.
Weeks already.
Y'all have any more questions?
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Appreciate your time, yeah.
There's no more discussion on that. I think we have a plan to move forward. Appreciate the, all the principals here, too. Thank y'all.
Do, and I understand you guys, you want me to set this up?
Yes, yes. And he may have to point them forward, like I said, I don't know that there is one, he may have to point one first and...
Yeah, he may, you know, and they may not have it, I don't know, but we're gonna...
Okay, we'll move on to discussion B. This is our board retreat. This is the one like we had last year where they come in, two here, instead of us having to go down there, and it does count as our, our yearly training.
It's so much better.
Yeah, a lot, a lot better. We need, though, to come up with three dates.
Or at least time frames.
Or at least time frames, where...
Where I can call.
Okay.
I thought January would work for days of last year.
It does for me, but I don't have everybody else's.
Yeah.
For me, that's probably my best time.
Sometime in January, okay. So I'll get her to give me three days in January and bring those to y'all the next month.
Good with everybody?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Does yours bother you in your new work schedule?
No. Sure?
Everybody else go? Marty, what about you, Elrod, that be?
I'll make it work.
Because everybody has to be here for that, it's like it was last year. It don't count for anybody if one person's out, so...
Mr. Apple, you're the only one who have any...
But usually he can at least slip in here. I think if he got in here for a while, I think we'd probably be okay.
Well, surely with three days, we can find something that'll work.
They might need money, yeah.
All right, uh, there are no policy reviews in July. No need for executive session?
I got a question for executive session.
He'd like to.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we will, uh, we have a motion.
Okay, go.
Well, we'll go ahead and have a motion go into executive session.
I'll take that motion.
Mr. Shodders, we have a second. Mr. McCallum, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay.
You want to take a second?
Yeah, we'll take a break.